Okay.
Thank you.
Right, we sure were recording.
All right, first step, go ahead and start. Go ahead and call me in order.
All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Do I need to say anything else to do that?
That's it, first time in business.
Perfect. Fabulous. And let's move to our first step in business. It's the accessory dwelling unit text amendments. Katie, do you have anything?
I do. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and bring my staff before. All of you have microphones. If you don't turn on right now, but when you speak, it helps us record the meeting in right minutes. We can hear you, so. Even though we can hear really well in here, it doesn't always pick up very well offline. More on the recording, so just remember to keep your microphone. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and pull up the wording. I'll start with my staff before. So back in 2020, December 2020, the city council decided to approve provisions for accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling unit is based on apartments. It could be a mother-in-law house. It's attached from the house. We'll talk about the different types in a minute. But there are different types of accessory dwelling units. But it's basically an apartment on a single-family property. So the city council decided that they wanted to change how they were processing those, and they added provisions to the code back in December 2020. Basically, as soon as we did that, a few months later, the state legislature decided that they wanted to have another set of rules, specifically about internal accessory dwellings. So based on apartments mostly, they want to allow those in almost every circumstance. They're gonna have to make us allow those kind of accessory dwellings. So that was three months after we passed our code allowing it. And then, of course, it was a little different than what we had passed, so we had to do a pretty big text amendment and change what we'd written. So we did that. And once again, this last year, the legislature, the state legislature, once again changed the accessory dwelling code. So what that did, the part that affects us is... I'll get into that later. You can make more sense later. But so part of it is what the state legislature changed, making changes to meet their code. The other part of that is some things that went to a conference, and I also heard from a couple developers who said, "Okay, great, I have a subdivision that I can..." The zoning is for residential half lots, half or single-family lots. With this new state law, it looks like I can just build a duplex there. Because it says that basically you can have two dwellings for everyone. And so in an effort to help that not happen, there's a few changes we can make, but we are allowed to make, and I'll talk about those. So that was also in there. So the changes that must be approved. I'm gonna go through these one by one. It is a... Okay. So here it talks about the internal accessory dwelling units are allowed as a permitted use in a single-family dwelling in the Act 2, Add-on Residential Half, and we have to add residential cottage zones. Before the state legislature let us exclude up to 25% of our residential areas from allowing internal accessory dwelling units, they changed it so that we have to allow them for any new construction or anything that was built after 2021. And our residential cottage zones happen to all be, there's only a few open in the city, and they happen to all be really new. So we can't exclude internal accessory dwellings in the cottage zone. We have to add it. So that's why we added it in here to allow it in the residential cottage zone. They're still not allowed in the commercial zones or industrial zones, but they're allowed in every residential zone. Except for, also not the multifamily. So we're adding like residential cottage backing. That one we have to do. It says here, "They are not allowed as a permitted use in the RC." We're scratching that. I'm just gonna say in the multifamily residential zones. Okay, so that's what we have to do. The other one is we have a minimum size for an internal accessory dwelling unit.
Minimum or maximum?
Minimum. We had a minimum size. We're not allowed to have a maximum. We haven't been able to.
Because I thought I read, because I read through this.
Yeah.
That I thought I read that a thousand square feet was the max.
Yes. So that is our maximum for an external accessory dwelling. I'm so glad that you read the code. That's awesome. So if you have an apartment above a garage, it's attached from your home, or a mother-in-law house, that does have a maximum square footage of a thousand square feet. So people are allowed to build out in certain zones, but they can't be bigger than a thousand square feet. But for an internal accessory dwelling, we were saying that they had a minimum of 400 square feet. We didn't want people to build a little tiny room in our house and try to rip that out and say it was an accessory dwelling. Can't do that anymore. We're not allowed to restrict based on size for internal. Internal ones are the ones that are really regulating. So there's really not much we can do on those. But so we have to take out, but they have to be minimum of 400 square feet. Okay, there's some that may be approved. These ones are up to the discretion of the planning commission of the city council, but I think that they're good changes to make. So the first one, this applies to both the external accessory dwelling unit and the internal. Both of them. The property owner must occupy the primary residence or the EADU. So we want to have a property owner living there. We don't want two units rented out from one property. I think that's gonna make things better for our neighborhood to have these kind of dwellings in there. And this also helps us prevent having duplexes built where we should have single-family homes. Because you have to have an owner living somewhere on the property. I don't care if it's personally, that's why I wrote it this way. I don't care if you're living in the accessory dwelling unit or in the primary residence. As long as they're on the property, I feel like they're gonna be there maintaining things and making sure that things are kept up and that they're being good neighbors, hopefully. So that's why I think that would be a good change. And the other one is also along the lines of limiting the duplexes being called an internal accessory dwelling unit. And it has to do with utility connections. We already have that in. Yeah, I didn't get this language. An IADU is prohibited in single-family attached dwellings, such as duplexes, twin homes, condos, or quadplexes. So that just says it there. Not allowed. Because I have had developers ask me, "Hey, I can just build duplexes now in these terms in the state code." So I want to make sure we don't allow that, and we are allowed to prohibit that with state code. We just have to have it in our property. So that's changes that I propose to make. I also had some editorial things, just adding "and." And maybe I just realized we have a few editorial areas. Might as well clean that up while we're at it, so changing that. But that's it for me. So my recommendation is to review the proposed amendments and make any revisions you think are necessary. Forward amendments in response to state code changes to the city council with a positive recommendation. The other changes, you can forward a positive recommendation to the city council, or you can just take them out if you don't think that they're in question in the interest of the city and then forward it to the city council. A public hearing is required for the site.
All right, so I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Do you have comments? No? Okay, then we're gonna close the public hearing. So now I'm gonna open this up for discussion. Do you think ladies can go first or maybe ladies? Do you want to start down there?
No.
No? All right, I guess I'll, I might need some questions. So I think one of the concerns I have is that when we say the property owner must occupy one of them, how is that gonna affect like the second home status? You know, what is that sort of look like? So that, I think that's the key. Like, I understand the idea, the intent. That particular portion, I feel like we need to, we somehow need to tweak that or change that or find another way to prevent that. Because I don't know if they're authorized or not, but there's multiple on my house that are rented out and even rented out to two different families, and it's really just been an issue. And so I think, especially right now, when we talk about inflation and we talk about interest rates and we talk about all of that, that would be the only section. So I think my proposal would be to accept the changes that are required by law and accept changes with positive recommendation for verbiage. And then I would be probably a no on property owner must occupy, but yes on the limit of one per property and yes on discouraging the use being built of the intent to be multifamily. And I guess is there a way or is there already statute that would prevent them from building duplexes? Because wouldn't the building itself be? No?
No. That's why we have to add this in because the way that we had it, it felt like there were some things that would discourage it already. Like you have to have, you're only allowed to have one utility connection. It says that you can only have one utility connection.
Yep.
If you have an IADU, you can have two. So obviously, that's gonna discourage it a little because you can't have...
Right, there's no way to split that.
It's separate, yeah, there's no way to split that.
Or the mail, the mail's gotta be...
The mail, the address, right. So that also discourages it. When we first brought, when we first had this discussion back in December 2020, we did have a really long discussion about whether or not we should be owner occupied or not. We've gone back and forth on that. And that was probably at least an hour that night, I'd say. So it's a really good question and something that probably need to discuss here. Just I, if you want to take that out, kind of fine, but...
It's really just that first caveat that I'm not so sure about. It's, I mean, but I don't want to remove that, having that be the sort of pinch piece to preventing duplexes because I don't think we should be building duplexes in single-family lots.
Yeah. I think this sentence takes care of that. That was just kind of one more thing to...
Got it, to strengthen the thought.
To strengthen it after the conference I went to, they talked about what you can do to strengthen that as one thing. But it is a really good discussion topic, so our courage for planning commission to discuss that and decide what you think is best for the city.
I'd like to weigh in on that if you don't mind.
Oh, I just...
I know I read some articles at the Park Record where people were having a lot of problems in Park City and Deer Valley because they didn't have a property owner on the property when the issues came up with people that they were either renting to or they've kind of been getting away with doing an Airbnb. And because there's no property owner there, it's created a lot of issues. And so I could want like it just for that reason, just for listening to the voices out of Deer Valley and Park City and the issues that have come up because there wasn't an owner on site when... And it was multiple issues. It was multiple different actually instances as well.
Yeah. Well, maybe could you clarify? So I'm trying to understand your concern. I don't know that I quite understand it, so could you clarify that a little bit more? Yeah, so I think if we look at this, we have all kinds of codes that prevent upkeep, noise, parking...
Nuisance, yeah.
Nuisance. So I think, you know, and if I'm not mistaken, they have to be permitted to the city as well, right? For long-term rental or an application process, at least.
They are supposed to have a permit when they do an IADU, whether it's external or internal, that you need to apply. They should apply for a permit for that.
So then there's, I feel like there's all this legal recourse that we have for those situations. And my background is, I mean, I've worked in a resort community with all kinds of those things. And I just don't think that, I think we're gonna continue to restrict families' abilities to rent out properties if they can't sell them at these interest rates and their families can't, are gonna have to move. And so I think if you're gonna rent the accessory dwelling unit, that's totally fine. And then if you get in a situation where you need to rent the other one, then I don't see that as an issue of like my neighbors doing it. And so I think all the other things are absolutely great. I don't think we need to be building duplexes in single-family homes. I don't think we need multiple on any property. I don't think we need any of that. I just, I don't know that you need to prevent the homeowner or restrict the homeowner from renting out their property.
Can I add one thing? Just kind of, I usually don't jump in the discussion, but just for background. Some of this came out with the city council. One of the people that was commenting from the public kind of concerned because they were planning to build an external accessory dwelling unit on their property and they were also planning on going on a mission for their church for a couple years. And they didn't want to feel like they had to sell their house or that they couldn't rent out their...
But that was temporary.
Was temporary. So it's something to consider. I think that's one of the arguments that persuaded the city council not to put that in there the first time around. So just thought maybe that was something to consider.
The theme, the part of the issue in my mind is, you know, then you also end up with the second homeowners who are vacationing here in the winter and aren't here all summer, and then the basement's rented. I just think like it's just money's a lot. We're creating more work with the first line when we have all kinds of recourse at their statements. That's my opinion and that's all.
Yeah, and a lot of times the planning commission will have their own opinions and ask, "All right."
Yeah. Well, the part of the question, my mind, is also the nature of neighborhoods, right? If you start saying that people can have accessory dwelling units and their own home and rent out both, then we're starting to change the nature of the neighborhood possibly. And I think the fact that developers are asking about building duplexes and multiple units on a single property, single plots, indicates that they, these have, we'll call them bad intentions, a little bit of a sort of bad intention. They're looking at ways to exploit the law to make more money off of things that we're intending to just have and to be single home dwellings. And so I can see the value in limiting that to try to preserve the nature of neighborhoods. Does anybody else have any other thoughts on ways to go about doing that? And I think to your point also that we have these other laws. I mean, it sounds like the state has hamstrung us, so we can't really restrict accessory dwellings.
There are a few things to restrict.
So we have no leverage there. If somebody applies for it, it sounds like we have to give them the permit. So we've got no leverage there. Nuisance, I mean, you gotta be doing something pretty egregious, right?
Well, you would think that they wouldn't have anything egregious going on in Deer Valley or the Park City area either, but because of the tourist attraction that they get there in these multimillion-dollar homes, they're having a lot of issues because they've allowed it to be like a multi-use home in a dwelling like, I mean, you know, the density's a lot higher in Park City and maybe it's not a good comparison, but I'm sure they all had good intentions in the beginning.
Now, I'm trying to remember, do we have any prohibition on short-term rentals in these accessory dwelling units?
Yeah, we do. So if you have an accessory dwelling unit, you're not allowed to use that for a short-term rental.
Which is defined as 30 days?
30 days or less.
That's really nothing. Like, that's really short.
Right, so that's saying that they put in here Airbnb, right? Because they couldn't, so...
They can't use it for Airbnb.
They can't use it for Airbnb.
It has to be a rental that's 30 days from home.
So it would have eliminated a lot of those vacationer problems already. So is that where most of the concerns were coming from?
I don't, it was hard to say. I mean, because you, Park Record took, write an entire article about it, but I've read a lot of things on like the Nextdoor app and issues that they were having, having to call a police. So it was hard to distinguish between whether it was somebody from Airbnb. It really kind of sounded more like rental people. But there were instances where there were Airbnb people.
Katie, are there any other ways that we could make it so that people wouldn't want to start putting duplexes in?
You know, I think...
I think that's what you said about last time.
I think down in this line that says it's prohibited, it does prohibit it.
But it says, it says an IADU is prohibited. Single-family attached zones such as duplex, right? So we're only saying that they can't put another apartment in their basement in a duplex, but I'm saying they can't do a duplex. Let's be kind of like triplex.
Yeah, maybe there's wording, there's wording we can use, like a single, I don't know. That's a good, maybe there's something to get out there. Because I can see, one of the really important things that the planning commission does is we look at the code and make sure that it's clear and that what we say is easily interpreted. Because if there is a problem that comes up and someone says, "No, I'm reading the code this way," and we benefit from something else, the benefit of the doubt is gonna go to that in that case. We have to make sure our code is really clear and that what we're saying, anyone can interpret it. We don't want it to be too complicated.
We're no longer allowed to limit by size. 400 is pretty small for this rule.
It is really small, yeah. They're even allowed to, they clarified this in the state legislature this year. They can add it to a garage. I think everyone here knows that Utah has some major issues with affordable housing right now. Our, the cost of housing has increased so much in the last five years. It's really just got crazy. So the state legislature is looking at different ways that they can make it more affordable for people to live there. Because there are so many people that don't have a place to live. Whether that's owning a home or renting a home, we're looking at different ways to do that. And this is one way that they've done that.
I think, again, just for the council, I think I'm agree with everything except for the line of the owner must occupy the primary residence. I think we have plenty of other options to control that. So if there's more discussion, I'm happy to hold it. But otherwise, I think I would just make a motion and let the chips fall, I guess. Let me ask a couple more questions. So do we have a good definition of what an external accessory dwelling unit is and what an internal accessory dwelling unit is?
Yeah, that is a really good question. We look at, I don't remember if I copied the whole code here. Okay.
Yeah.
It's defined in this first part. Sometimes in codes we'll have a specific definition section, and we don't have this one. So it's defined more here. External accessory dwelling units are allowed... Hold on, that's not it. Oh, yeah, so...
I thought it was just that it was detached from the home.
Yeah.
I kind of remember, I thought I seen it, but I've not seen anything. I didn't see anything that said it had to be somebody paid from the home or anything like that. It just could not be attached.
Yeah, and that's really what it is. Has to be attached or not attached, that's the difference. Trying to, I don't know, I had it somewhere.
It's defined here. I mean, you're setting out what it must contain and how big. And I mean, I think that's, those subpoints are your definition.
No, Rich has a really good point, though. One thing that we need to make sure is that we have really good definitions in our code because a lot of times it comes back to what those definitions mean. And that's how the laws are interpreted. So it's good to have very good definitions. That's something that I've tried to work on as I've been the planner. And I think that I'm gonna look at that far. I feel like it's somewhere in the code and maybe it is in the definition section. I think I might have where we added it, it's in the zoning definitions. But if it's not, then I will add something there.
Maybe another question, so... What's, you know, to the extent that we're limited in our ability to restrict these, why are we concerned when people wanting, wanting to build duplexes? And I understand I'm in the argument, I'm changing nature of the neighborhood, but is there, are there other concerns?
I think that is the concern, which, you know, that's something that the planning commission can talk about is, do you want people to be able to come in and build a duplex in a single-family zone? I do not. There are, there are things to think about. The affordable housing issue is something to think about. It really is.
But it sounds like we can't stop them from building the duplex. All we can do is limit how they use it.
So we, if you consider a basement apartment a duplex, then you can't stop that. If you think about how a twin home looks...
Right.
This is what we're trying to stop.
I mean, that's how I'm wondering.
It's a twin home, but on a single-family.
With the definition, can we do some things that we're not banning internal accessory dwellings, but we define them so that they have to be at different levels or different things to forces?
There's not really, there's a limited list of restrictions we can ban for. We can put it in our code from the state legislature.
Okay, so...
It's pretty limited, but I think we could define it. Maybe not on what level or we could think about adding...
Can we say no language about having like two front doors?
I think we could do that.
Okay.
So that's one to consider.
Can we say something about when the front door has to be separated? Or an entrance has to be separated?
Per percentage of size versus from one piece to the other?
We can't.
No, that's...
We can't do that. But I think when I was at that conference, they did say something about wording about front doors. That's all, I just remember something about that. No, it's your main apartment, so it's... But you don't want to restrict someone from having like...
A basement apartment.
Yeah, your basement apartments are fine. You just don't want, yeah. The way to restrict duplexes with how, what are they, basement apartments?
Right.
Well, and I think it goes back to the thing that Justin Mosamer or somebody that, you know, or I think it was you, Katie. They can't have two separate mailboxes. You know, they can't have two separate addresses. It's gotta be one.
You can have two separate utilities.
The utilities, I think, is the big delineate here because who's gonna agree?
Pay for what?
Yeah, who's gonna agree to go in unless you're the homeowner?
The only problem, I think that's one of the reasons why the owner occupied is because you could have someone come in, build a whole bunch of twin homes and run them all out. And then if they got the utilities...
They feel like an apartment, they can pay all the utilities and just not put it into the rent. So then that just goes to one person.
Right.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like, and I'm with you on that, but it sounds like there may be some other opportunities to accomplish what we want without necessarily restricting use. It sounds like your concern is restricting use, not necessarily restricting duplexes. I am all for multifamily units being built in the correct zone and not the next door and vacant lot. I think that we want to preserve that integrity because I think that affects property value and all kinds of other factors that I don't think that's the key and we want to open. I think my concern is homeowner would be in the event that I needed to relocate and couldn't sell my home because of interest and costs and all that sort of stuff. Now, I mean, I think these, I don't know, for those who don't know, Rich and I have identical houses. So, you know, I think I would like to have my basement rented, but then if all of a sudden I couldn't live where I couldn't live and I can't sell my house, I would then need to rent that. And so I'm saying, I'm virtually certain my neighbor's doing the same thing. It's not an issue and I don't see it being an issue. I think all other proponents, I don't want people, you know, doing that and then putting in a mother-in-law, a detached garage, which we already have. We can already eliminate. That's not allowed, right? You can't have an internal and an external.
There are only one.
Right, so, I mean, I think we're doing all sorts of things to prevent the scenario we're talking about. I just don't think we want to hinge homeowners on how they use their property. I wholeheartedly agree that we need to control how the properties are developed and continue to develop. I just, you know, I'm not a proponent of putting limitations on homeowners on how they use their property. Now, if there's rules in terms of, you know, applications for printing and all that, there's a lot of that weeds. We can, I think mitigate and control that. If it becomes an issue, then, you know, permanent revocation, whatever the case may be.
Those are some great points for everybody, so...
So then could we, could we make a motion on the parts that are required and table the discussion or push back the decision on that, on ways to prevent duplexes kind of in our flexible area? Till next time, if a little bit more thought into that? If a little bit more thought to that?
Sure, we can, we can absolutely just send forward the part that we want to and we can work on the other parts. We do recommend getting the state code required ones done because those go into effect eight seconds. So we're trying to get that to, you know, as soon as possible. But the other ones, we have, we can definitely take more time to talk about those. And if you want to look at the definitions of these type of units and maybe adding, maybe we do some research and what other cities are doing about the doors. I don't know which specific municipality you were referring to, but maybe there's something out there we can find about or make up about the doors to limit that. Yeah, so any parts that you, yeah, we could do that, somebody can make a motion for that. Or, or if you want to, somebody else can make a motion, except to us, totally up to you all.
I will motion that we accept the changes as written and make a positive motion for city council for all portions required by state and for all portions, clarifying for Rich. I recommend that we make a positive motion for limiting one per property. Let's see if I'll not set that wrong. I recommend that we make, uh, that we approve discouraging I A D U code for being used to build duplexes in single-family zones. And that we review for Rich for internal and external accessory dwelling units and revisit property owner occupancy as a requirement for our next move. Okay, so that'd be recommendation for everything except two A fourteen and two B six. I think you got it right.
Yeah, I grabbed it.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Second, Sam, Sam.
Okay, Sam, or Sam? Yay or nay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yay.
Yay. Yay. First, perfect, did I say something? Motion passing.
Motion forward to the city council.
Forwarded to the city council with our recommendation to proceed with the changes except for the change to two A fourteen and two B six.
Very clear, thank you. Okay, good.
Okay, and. So now moving on to the next point, initiation of the general plan comprehensive updates. Katie?
Yes, so I don't have a staff report on this. Uh, with everybody being brand new to the planning commission. And I just thought it would be a good idea to watch a video that I watched about what general plans are. So we're going to, one of the things that the mayor's asked us to do this year is to revise the general plan. So that's going to be one of the major tasks that we work on this whole interior here. We'll probably just go section by section. And so I thought the best way to start out is to watch a video about what the general plan is, what it's supposed to be. It's about thirty minutes, we'll skip some parts. And then we'll have a discussion about our general plan, not necessarily getting into all the details tonight. But I'd love to have a discussion about what we want to have in our general plan and what everybody thinks is important for finances. So. Go ahead and interpret this video, right? So a person who's doing the training for it is Meg Ryan. She is the planner that works for the League of Cities and Towns. It's a League of Cities and Towns organization that works in Utah. They do a lot of trainings and conferences, they do a lot of legislature lobbying, those kind of things. And Meg Ryan is, she's been a planner for a long time, so she has some really good things to say.
We base our agreements on the general plan and our zoning map that we created from the general plan. So we said there's gonna be lots of, so if we have lots of density here, then we'll look at what then how that affects our existing system. So we can come up with a plan to make it work. So what the general plan can take into account is our capital.
Yeah, when she was talking about the moderate income housing plan, that is something we have in our plan right now. Uh, but we don't have to have that in our plan because um it's not required by state laws since we're a fifth class city, which is, and we have a population of five thousand or less. So the last time we did this, about five or six years ago, the planning commission and city council wanted to make sure that in our community, we have a place for people with a moderate income to live. And that's something they wanted to look at, but it's, we're actually not required to have it in our general plan. But we do have it in there now, something to think about is if we want to keep that or not. A lot of the state mandates lately have been about certain things you have to have in uh, if you have, if you're a bigger city to uh, for moderate income of housing. You, they have a whole menu of things you can pick from, and you have to pick so many of them. We don't have to do that. We don't have to do all the reporting. It's really nice actually that we don't have to do all of that. But it's based off of the county, right? The county's median income, yeah. So for example, in Francis, we do have some developments where they have to do restricted housing. Uh, and they have to sell those to people that make eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of the AMI, just the median income. And that translates, it depends on the family size, and there's a lot of factors into it. But at this point, it's translating into a town home that's about five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand dollars is median income. So median income right now, I think was ninety, ninety thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand a year for a family in the poor. But it really depends on family size. Something that we get from a county is determined that people are qualified for those unrestricted houses. Okay, so skipping the pop-up. Not that I didn't get much, not quite far enough, sorry. There we go. Okay.
So that's all of that I was gonna show you. Now, um, we can probably open up a public hearing and then we can have a discussion on, on some of the things that they talk about and what we think is gonna be important for Francis, so.
Alright, then let's open a discussion for public comment. You have any comments?
No pressure, no pressure. No, I, I probably do have a lot of, I haven't been able to formulate any thoughts, but, I, I think that the valley is, and Francis campus opening in a position where, um, there's lots of commitments happening and how, how we address everything and make good decisions and try to, um, follow what makes sense, what fits, what doesn't, and, and try to be reasonable in how we establish our commercial, our residential communities, our, um, how we address our business opportunities that want to come here. I was just in a meeting today, um, we're relaunching the campus businesses association and our goal is to try to, um, create a platform where businesses have a network and can communicate with one another and try and work together. Because, you know, everybody came here, you know, with a reason and a why, and so we're trying to build on their wise and, um, help them be integral parts of the community. And it, it all comes back to, um, you, in order to have a successful commercial platform and community, you have to have rooftops, but you have to, you know, try to create harmony where it all makes sense and fits. So there, a- and I know that people don't want the valley to change, it's going to, I mean, that's inevitable. How we, how it looks, you know, cities have a great deal of power in how that happens. And it can still happen in a very positive way, but it also can happen where we're attracting, um, the ability for businesses and residents to co-mingle and survive. And where you can have a community where you can live and work in your same town. That, I, that's pretty special, where you don't have to commute to work. Can you just think of the name? Oh, my name's Gracia, G R A C I A. Thank you. Yeah, and my last name is E I S M A N. So anyway, I, I just think there's, there's a lot of work to be done, but I think we can all do it. Because I, I think this is the point where we have to be very aware of, you know, how it happens. It, I mean, it's going to happen, but you have to manage it. Because if you don't manage it, then it's gonna manage you and it's not gonna be very perfect. So I, I mean, uh, that's, that's my observation at this point.
Well, thank you, Gracia.
There will be more opportunities to, and that was great input, and there will be many more opportunities later on in the general plan. So, you know, planning, that every time we talk about the general plan, we're all in public hearing, is I think it is.
And I, and I work with a group of, um, developers, entrepreneurs that are very focused on how growth happens and, and have very good input and experience, so we're happy to also come and, um, talk to everybody and not just Francis, but, you know, the whole valley. Because I, I think we're at a turning point for this valley. Where is growth going to happen? It's Park City's tapped. So, you know, how do you manage the, the rural areas that are the focus of develop, developers and, and all of that? So, I think how, how we all take it and look at it and, and what we do is it will be pivotal in our futures.
If there's no other comment, then we'll close the public comment section. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, it's okay with you, Rich, I just have some topics that I thought we could kind of talk about tonight as we start this process. We're just at the very beginning and a lot of, um, the work of revising the general plan and updating it is gonna fall on my commission. That is gonna be your primary job as a planning commissioner in the next year is to work on this general plan, so just excited. So, that being said, thinking about the video, I'm sorry, the sound was a great, I should have threw that up, you guys didn't hear about it, so. What, maybe one good place to start? We have to have, um, a house again, a lot of houses, we have to have a Landry Sullivan, the transportation element. What other elements, this is, I love that a lot of you haven't seen the general plan, don't, don't start scrolling through it right now. Because I like that we have kind of a clean slate there, we haven't all worked on this, worked on this for a very long time. What elements do you think are important in Francis? Or, that's alright, that's alright.
Mine too.
That's good, I'm glad you did your homework, I'm glad you looked at it, that's awesome. But, if you, just, you know, don't think about that too much. Don't, we don't have to use the same elements we had before. If you haven't seen that, what would you, what elements do you think are important in Francis? Besides the two required ones we have now?
I mean, I think certainly the rural feel of the valley, the, and kind of the tie to that feel. It'd be a shame to see things become overdeveloped and crowded.
Other elements?
Hey, I called up.
Yeah, I talked to the mayor, we actually have like four hours in the car driving to St. George today. And we talked about the general plan the whole way down. And he said the same thing.
Sure, sure, it's been like six hours?
Tom told me to be creative about that.
Yeah, that's true, so. Well, I know, I think it's interesting because that's my job and I was actually glad in a lot of ways to have that much time with the mayor on the line because I don't always get it. And so having that much time to tap his brain and kind of get his fill for what he thinks needs to be in the general plan is invaluable to me. And he said a lot about that, that the tradition and history of Francis is gonna be really important, needs to pay a central role in that plan. So.
I think we have to develop some sort of commercial infrastructure beyond what we have if we're gonna survive. I don't know, you know, how we facilitate that because from where I see and look at the maps that I did as I reviewed, um, you know, that's a lot of long time homes, I think, that are occupying a lot of that commercial ground. Now, I understand we can't obviously make those people, but, um, how we transition that I think is gonna be important, um, in making sure that we get a commercial front, um, especially focused on SR thirty-two. So I think that we have to have a commercial plan speaking to sort of where you're coming from, um, to gain revenue. Um, and I understand that, you know, I even read, we like to avoid big box, but to a certain extent, I remind you, it says retailers that this town would be appealing to that I think you're gonna have to give at some point consideration to.
Yeah, that is really, the tax revenue is a, as we've grown in the city, we are, we've become really small and have, have, you know, five employees right now that work for Francis. And, and as we're growing, the demand for services increases and we're trying to figure out how we pay for that. Houses, residential, we get about, we have to spend about a dollar fifty for every dollar that we get from property tax revenue. So, we're gonna keep going farther and farther, I think at this point we're in pretty good financial shape, but that will probably change, um, as our residences age and we stop having new development. That will be harder to maintain the city.
But we currently have some commercial moving in, right?
We do, yeah. So one of the things that the last general plan started was the city center zone. And, and that has changed the zoning around this floor, we stopped to allow time to create, um, kind of that main street feel. So retail on the ground level and then allowing residential units on the side and the third stories. So we do have a development that was approved, site plans are approved for the corner, um, that's closest to the city building here. Uh, they're supposed to start building in spring this, anytime soon, but I, I kind of wonder if that might be delayed a little bit, just a little bit. The economy right now, interest rates and things like that, so, um, that could be delayed a little bit. We have a lot of interest on the Mitchell House, it's on the opposite corner. Um, the brick, an old brick house, a lot of people are interested in that house. I get a call at least once a month, somebody like, hey, what can I do with this? I wanna buy it. And there's already somebody that owns it, the city's actually tried to buy it. The city's tried to purchase it and develop it into a city center type of property, but they're not interested in selling it. They want to sell it. Yeah. Anyway, it's, uh, just so you know, it's taken off the historical register at this point because of some structural issues there. So it probably won't remain the way it is, hopefully whoever develops it will use the bricks and incorporate that into it, but, hopefully they choose to do something soon because I think a lot of people would like to see something happen there.
What about the scenic heights area, is that their commercial approved already in that area as well?
Yeah, so, a couple of years ago, city council approved a zone change, that's something they talked about in videos, zone changes. A, a development company came in and said, hey, this is, this property isn't in the city center zone, but we think the front of it really makes sense that we put it in the city center zone. And the city council, thinking, yeah, we'd actually like to have some commercial and that makes sense there, they decided to allow up to be a resort in the city center in front and then behind that little townhomes. And then closest to Riverblows will be cottage lots, single family cottage lots.
Which looks like they're building now.
Yeah, they started working on it.
They're starting with the cottages?
Yeah, that's the plan.
And then isn't there more across the street down there by Page Lane on?
Yeah, there is a West Harwood, yeah, Harwood Homes, a lot of people might be familiar with that valley. Anyway, West Harwood, um, got a development site plan approved for the corner. Um, he actually owns two corners of Lambert and Page Lane right now. Uh, the east and the west, one part each side. And he's got a plan approved for the east side, for the south, north, yeah. North or south, Scott?
South.
South, I'm so bad with words. Southeast, he has a plan approved in southeast corner. And that one, I, I'm excited about that one, that one looks really nice, you know. And that's just commercial, though, they used residential, it's just commercial and it looks, it looks really good. So we do have some things coming in, the good news is the changes that were made with the general plan five, six years ago have actually really helped to bring in some commercial interest because, you know, obviously we didn't have a whole lot before that. So there are things coming in, the economy will dictate when those get built, but hopefully it's coming.
So in one thing, just not necessarily a handle of value, but just thinking about this and talking about, or thinking about issues that are arising from all this development. Um, in our plan, we put things relating to storm, storm drains. Because parking lots, we already seem to have taxed our, our capacity to get rid of water and get more parking lots and more homes. There's gonna be less ground for water to absorb into.
So, let's get Scott in, that Scott's our city engineer.
Yeah, we, um, when development comes in like, this is private, he's gotta come up with a storm drain plan to either retain the water on site or detain it and discharge it in the irrigation dishes. If he gets approval, the irrigation company can do that. So he's gotta come up with a plan to, to do that. So each project we will jab, we don't have a centralized storm drain system that we got a big pond on one side of town that it's all flows to. We've just been dealing with it on each side despite the specific project.
Uh, sidewalks, what is, uh, this winter got real crowded in Wild Willow, for those of us who walk the road.
Yeah, so Scott, go ahead, you can talk about Wild Willow.
We don't believe in sidewalks in Francis.
No, that was, that was, that was, when Wild Willow was subdivided twenty to thirty years ago, that's about the timeline. Even the new developments in Wild Willow were subdivided two years, three years ago. We didn't believe in sidewalks, people didn't wanna have sidewalks, we wanted that rules bill and we had sidewalks put into that. But now, go ahead, Scott.
Back when Wild Willow was approved, they had thirty foot wide roads, people could walk on the sides of the roads rather than sidewalks. And one of the reasons for that is because we plowed the tire with the road when we don't get so much done with it. But now, each subdivision, um, you know, we have different road cross sections that come through, you know, we, we do have a road cross section that requires different sidewalks. The scenic drive project is gonna have some current different sidewalk on the main road to go backwards. Um, but we also have a road cross section that has a walking path like in Riverblows subdivision on one side of the roads, there is some walking there. Um, but that's, you know, those are all things that, as we're going through this general plan, that you guys can look at and say, well, we wanna go to current different sidewalk. We wanna do something different, or there's, there's different options that we can look at and incorporate in the general plan and then we'll incorporate it in our construction standards and how it's subdivision constructed.
And I think is there any thought process to surveying, I mean, I know that we put a panel up here of four people all comprised of new developments and requests, but how are we really gonna capture the feel engagement? Especially when we have one attendant on an open, you know, meeting. I, I just think we need to somehow drive engagement in terms of what direction do we wanna see. I mean, is like pollution really a topic that the valley's gonna continue to care about? Are sidewalks gonna be an issue that we need to start thinking about and perpetuating? I love the trails idea, but then again, when you have five feet of stone, the longer we can use it. And we really do have some, I think, consideration with, we got pretty tight, so.
Yeah, so a couple of things with that, um, public outreach is one of the things I wanted to talk about here and get your feeling. And I really would love for the planning commission to decide what that's gonna look like and, and I'm happy to help. Talk about that, but let's talk about that in a minute. Uh, trails, we brought that up, that was something, we actually started this process a year ago. And we didn't get too far because of changes with the mayor and staff, we just didn't have the time. This year, we are committed to working on this, it's the top priority for planning commission and hopefully we do, only staff changes, so, uh, we can keep going on that. But what we talked about last year, that was one of the things that the planning commission wanted to do, was add a trail to all of it. So, something to consider there.
I think we'll have a reason with one.
Sure. Oh, the Sessom Trails Foundation. So Scott and I, we pretty much are here and we're in collaboration with the Trails Foundation. And they actually have a, they've got a grant for a trail along Hilltop Road. Uh, there is a trail there now, you might not know it, and so they're gonna make sure that it's, uh, improved and then hopefully they'll help maintain it.
Yeah, and they're, they're really proactive in trying to connect the whole area.
Right, connecting in one of the trails and then connecting all the trails.
And another thing that, that the state and counties are working on is a trail system that will connect all the state parks. It's in the very preliminary stages, but, so that's something too.
I want to, uh, I don't know if any of you have seen anything about this, our summit, community visioning discussion. This is kind of gonna be like the process we go through, we get public input, the county's doing something similar right now. The county's doing something similar right now. I went to a meeting for that and they had a, something where they have posted notes out and everybody could put on there. But they got data, some things they wanted to see happening and almost half of them were trails. So I think that is something that's important to our community. It used to not be, but I think the changes in the population we've seen, that it's becoming really important for people to have trails.
Didn't you guys send out a mail a lot too long ago? Did you get any return?
I think that must have been the R Summit. Uh, when they said, okay, that was the R Summit.
Yeah.
Um, and we'll go through a similar process to get, to get input on the, on the general plan. Okay, let's just talk about the elements. What, um, what things we saw, because we talked about history, I think that's gonna be an important element is um, preserving the culture and history of Francis. There's probably some different things that will be tied into that. Frontier Days for sure, that's lots of big cultural celebration for our community. And then that will also play into our land use and how our zoning looks, all of that. Um, what other elements? So like right now, let's just go ahead and look at kind of look at the elements that we have and maybe some of these make sense, maybe some not. Uh, we have land use element, transportation, modern income housing, uh, public facilities, economic, um, environmental element, and then taxation element. And a trails element. We actually have a trails element. We're just planning on revising that and maybe even adding a trail impact fee for new development when they come in to help us with the trails. And that, that was pretty much it with the elements. Do any of those not make sense to you or do you want to see anything different or added?
I, I think I like, I like all of them. Um, is there a timeline for having us process through this? I mean, do we need to do three a session or what's the?
So we're gonna try to work through this by the end of the year. The goal is to have a new general plan in place for 2024.
Does that mean November or October, like this will be?
So you don't want to finish up our part in October, November latest, and then pass it up to the city council. So, yeah, I, ideally, we would have, when we did this before, we are part of an association of governments called Mountainlands. Association of Governments, different than mountainland housing. So not the same thing, but, um, as part of Mountainlands Association of Governments, they had a planner that came in and actually really helped with the general plan. And they don't have that program anymore. So it's gonna be up to me and you to make it happen. And I think it makes sense to go through, uh, piece by piece. When I talked to the mayor about the general plan and what's in my mound and what we wanted to see in the future, I think that this will probably be more than just changing a sentence here or there. I think there's, um, really gonna be a big change. There's a lot of things in here right now that I don't know that we need. So for example, the first part, this whole introduction and you know, I think it's important like the speed, like the video talked about to say what the general plan does and how it's used. And I love that they go through the new strikement during it every year. Because this has honestly been on the shelf and we kind of forget about it. I like the idea of bringing it back at least once a year, maybe in January. If what makes sense, do we want to change anything or revise anything in the general plan? Always a good, we like our goals. But I want it to be a living document, something that really guides the city. And so looking at what we have now, I'm not sure that the goals have really, I kind of like the timeline of we're gonna do this by this date. I think that holds you accountable to accomplish things by a certain time and checklist for the next five years. So, um, then we go into this. History of Francis, this is great, really good information, but probably better for an appendix. Because we want it to be focused on. This is what we envision for the next five years. This is the direction we're going. Here's our goals and here's how we're gonna get there. And it gets lost with all of this, so. That's what I, that's what I think, but maybe everybody else has a different opinion. Yeah, there's a lot of, I think because they have professional time to do this, they just have a lot of information that maybe we don't even need. So I'd like to make it more concise and, and something that we will work to and it's not so corny because it's so huge. It's just like, this is fifty pages, so. I'd like to get it down to a little more workable size and really focus on what the goals are. So, okay, let's talk about public outreach. Um, what do you think? What do you think's gonna work? You know, you're all here, so that says that you're more involved in the community than ninety-nine percent of your neighbors and community members. But what do you think will get feedback from people? What can we do? To try to get input. Last time we did an online survey. We did like a mailer thing or it's what we find out about it.
Did you get a good return?
I wasn't here then. Scott, you remember?
I think we got, um, I want to say that twenty or thirty percent. We got more than I thought we'd get, but it, we didn't get a lot of people on.
I mean, for marketing purposes, that's a pretty good number.
Yeah, but it'd be better if we got, you know, we heard more from the community rather than when we try to do something and people can say, well, I don't think we should do this. Well, where were you when you were doing the general plan? You know?
So what, uh, what's our timeline for getting feedback from the community?
Well, that's probably something that we should work on in the next couple of months. Is just kind of defining what areas to want your feedback on, what do those questions look like? And maybe that's something I can bring back next time. Is here's some ideas I have or questions I might want to ask from the survey we did last time. Start there. And then get your feedback on it next time and then you can decide this would be a great time now. We have many ideas, how to outreach. We can really define what we're looking for, what feedback we want at that point.
Because I mean, one way to, to get, I mean, just part of getting feedback is getting people's attention. And I mean, so for example, if we had a limited timeline, I'd say we should have something at Frontier Days where we're gonna have a lot of eyeballs, but that might be too late for that feedback.
I think there's different stages. So the beginning stage, we just want to kind of know what people envision for Francis. Are there people that want to turn into this big urban area? Probably not so much. I think almost everyone I talk to wants it to stay rural. Okay, well, what does that mean exactly? Trying to find out, what does rural really mean? Or a lot of people say, well, I want smart rural. Okay, what does, what does that mean? What's smart rural to you? Because the flow of means to me might be different to somebody else. So trying to kind of figure out, okay, what does that mean for residents of Francis? What's the overall community vision for Francis? And then, so we'll take that initial idea, we'll start working on the general plan, start working on the exact authority and then, and the maps, there'll be some maps that go along with this. And then I think, you know, by telling it to Frontier Days, that's a great time to say, this is what we've come up with. What do you think about this idea? What do you think about this plan?
So I think I, I like the idea of another mailer and I realize that that has some costs associated with it.
Well, that's okay. We're planning on having some costs too.
Um, what are the chances we can leverage connections with other like cities? I happen to see a mailer in Ivins, um, the city of Ivins, town by St. George. And just, you know, get a copy of theirs. Let's, no sense in reinventing the wheel if we can borrow some of the surveys already out there, solicit some of the answers back from the county. I'm sure those results are gonna come back.
Yeah.
Um, and see if there's a way to delineate, you know, or separate out what parts of the county, you know, if we can somehow find and use that data. Um, that would, I think, be important. And then I think really just, uh, before we submit this mailer out, like we take all of those ideas and we grab the ones that we like. And then, you know, how is our social media engagement? Like, do we, do we have any?
We do have a Facebook page, so that's something where if we do a survey, I think it'd be great to have a link to it from the Facebook.
Can we start blasting, um, just engagement in general towards the, um, Facebook site? So before we launch the surveys, can we remind everyone that we have a Facebook and that in the coming months, we're gonna be leveraging the Facebook site and check back or follow or like or however you want to phrase it. So we start driving that engagement now. I'll be honest, I'm not even sure if I follow it. So.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a really good.
I have really easy ways to do it. I am one hundred percent guilty of not reading my mailer until it was late. I don't do social media, so something to me is maybe like a QR code posted somewhere that you could easily put a very short survey on. A lot of people won't take the time to fill out something that's very lengthy. I think it needs to be very short, concise, um, easy to access by several different, um, avenues. Whether it be mailers, I mean, some people are gonna be very good at that. Some people, you know, social media, give them several different options to be able to supply that information. Um, and maybe even some marketing science or something around, you know, that makes it easy and, and very well known that it's out there.
Instead of a conservator.
We could only put a QR code on the, the big orange street sign. Guess what? Next watch of the year, I'm not gonna have those big orange thing out there this year. We can talk to the mayor about that and those are not gonna be out there on the street. You don't have to have problems with it.
But I think we could do, I mean, I, we certainly could leverage like the reader board that said, hey, follow your survey. I mean, I, I did drive into Ivins like in the middle of their survey and I had no idea what was going on, but immediately knew. Within three blocks of entering the city with lawn signs and marketing and it was on every mail log.
Wow.
And so, I mean, I was like, oh, there you go. You know, I'm just saying like that's, I, obviously I filled out that county one as well, but I think, yeah, I think we want to start driving that engagement and then talking about, um, and being as noisy as we can and until the point where it makes sense to jump off and actually get the data and feedback. And I think there's plenty of items in here that we can continue to work in in the interim to revise the plan before we get into what I would venture would be the meat and potatoes of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, obviously land use, transportation are probably gonna be.
Taking those parts. That would take a lot of time.
I feel like those will be the individual ones. I think it takes just a little bit of input to say, hey, some of this stuff, you know, history of Francis, I hundred percent agree. Like, as I was reading through all fifty pages thick. Um, I was like, that could have been an appendix and I think, you know, there's value to our culture and heritage in preserving town. But I think that can go on the back of a general plan for a city and more. You know, that can be the subject for why we do what we do, but definitely could be an appendix.
Yeah, I agree. I like that. We'll just start, next time, we'll start with, we have the land use and transportation. Maybe we'll just start with land use because that was a huge section. Let's, next time, let's tackle, we'll tackle, um, the community outreach, talk about that a little bit. And then I think it makes sense to start looking at this, um, mission statement. Oh, what's up here? So kind of this introduction, all of this mission statement. Uh, I have an idea for this mission statement. Mayor and I talked about and I'll bring that next time. Let's start looking at this kind of thing. This map, this picture's really pretty. I don't know if we can do it or not. We can discuss that next time too. And then maybe start jumping into the, uh, the land resalvement. That will be the goal for next time. Introduction's done, land resalvement. Okay. Did you see anything? She had some different examples. I know it's hard because we're just sort of very beginning of this. Did you see anything that you liked from that video, which was showing examples of, of things? There was the, the Big Water, Mill Creek. Big Water had just, uh, preset for every element, they looked at the past or looked at where they are right now, where they want to be and they set goals. So that, I know that was good. Mill Creek had the same kind of thing, but they did it in a table. That's pretty organized. I like that. Are there any formats that you stuck out to you?
I thought Big Waters was okay. The others were really hard to see the distance that went on the screen.
That's true. That's true. Okay. Um, homework for everybody. If you can think of a town that you really like in Utah, encourage you to look at their general plan so you can find it and see how you think, like what you like about their general plan. So that's something that I'll do too. Try to get some ideas what other cities are doing and see what I like about it. That will help us. Nothing wrong with kind of copying what other people are doing to the other town.
What sections, I, I should write this down. What sections do you want to tackle for next meeting? What sections should we plan to look at, review and come with ideas?
So let's talk about the introductory materials, so.
Pages from one through.
One through. Let's see. Land use is.
Might as well be.
Yeah, land use is a huge one. We might not get through it all.
Do you, do you think we should tackle land use before input?
I think we could start thinking about it because it's something we have to have in there. And I don't see it changing.
The time.
I think there will be some changes that come with this. Mayor and I have talked about a few ideas and I'll talk about tonight, but I think that's something to talk about next week. Um, but I like to look at. So that first twenty-one pages. And one thing we could talk about is, does this need to be twenty-one pages?
Pages one through twenty-one come prepared.
Yeah, one through twenty-one. And, and I really would like to think about twenty-one pages. Wow, that is a lot. And we get into the nitty gritty on a lot of this in our zoning. So what is the most important thing for our general plan to say? Think about that too and look at other cities and see what they're doing. So. Um, any other, anything else anyone wants to talk about with this general plan? I think I'm good where we are. I'm happy to, I think that was a good discussion tonight. Helps me get some direction going forward. So. Anybody else?
All right, if there's no other comments, then let's move on to approval of minutes from November first, twenty twenty-two. I make a motion to approve minutes from November of twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's hope.
Hi.
All right, perfect. It's unanimous. We approve minutes.
Thank you.
All right, then that's it. So that's adjourned for the evening. Do I need to make a motion to, or have someone make a motion to adjourn?
Just give a second. Yeah, make a motion.
My second.
All right, we need to talk.
Evening's over.
Do we need to help Tina for anything?
No, you guys are free to go. Uh, I know, but there.